They used to take it to Solana. I guess one of the other guys isn't there anymore. He just thought it'd be easier bringing the tires.
Guess the other thing is we have a minimum charge.
What are they?
Yeah, that sounds good.
We're paying thirty-seven a ton. What are they paying in Solana? Do you know, Don?
Thirty-three fifty.
Thirty-three fifty.
You said the scale is plus or minus twenty or forty?
Twenty.
So it's actually forty max?
Forty bucks. So we could charge the minimum of forty pounds. And then anything, if we know they're bringing in over forty pounds, it's the minimum plus however much. I think that would make sense.
We come up with a minimum charge.
When they're cut up, can you determine how many tires are? They don't have cut up they are?
I can, I can contact the resource manager and see what they say. Because they, a lot of times they'll pay, they'll pay landfills by the weight. When they pick them up.
What did they look like when you brought them in? All different sizes, all different sizes?
No, they were car tires.
No, no, but I mean, how were the chunks like?
He had one truck tire that he didn't, he didn't cut the tread on, so that was wrong. But they were bad. It's just one of those things that if we do that, I don't know if we'd be able to get one. Getting a charge for them, that sounds good. Minimum charge.
But they'd have to be processed correctly. If they're not processed correctly, they would go back and be ready to charge.
Yeah, it's still, if you're on for something, some weight, you don't want to do that. So figure out a minimum charge then, for accepting processed tires.
Yeah, and I think, I guess my opinion is we do not accept them until this, until we have that charge in place. Like you're just telling them, we're working on a charge for them, but they cannot follow the charge at regular trash dust, because that's, it wastes, it wastes them. And I think bulk may be a problem too, actually. Because they will not pack, I mean, real well.
Well, they can take them to Solana.
Yeah, or you can take them.
They'll take them and just put them in their landfill.
Have you only encountered this the one time?
Yep. One time in six years.
I wasn't aware anybody was processing anywhere out here. I knew they did a test a little.
I think he's just doing it to get rid of them. He gets them in. And they fill it. And his coworker filled the dumpster up and then take the dumpster to Solana. Well, now I think he just throws them back in his car. Brought them out there. It was a business. I would have to find out.
Could you hear what we were discussing? No, okay, so someone had brought processed tires to the landfill. And we rejected them at first because basically what it says in our policy is that we charge by the tire. But when they're chopped up, how are we to determine how many tires are there? So we're discussing what we could have as far as a policy for tires that are already pre-processed. There's a method by which you do it by cutting out the sidewalls and then portioning out the tread part. So we talked about setting a minimum fee because our scale has a variance of negative or plus twenty pounds.
Yeah, I would sort of come up with the first pound for the minimum. To go, to bring out one or two tires, you're probably not going to wait. Figure something out, come back.
Okay. You got any ideas for just a minimum of a charge?
Forty pounds. Forty pounds.
Okay, okay.
If you find out what we're paying per pound on our end, add ten or fifteen percent, arrange, see a range there, and then do a minimum of forty times that.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Off the top of my head, I think, I think we're going to be at eighty dollars around. I don't know that.
Okay.
But I
I'll let you know.
Just from what I roughly, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Gary. Sure, we can.
It's for the, um, Amer- or Sylvan American Legion.
Sylvan American Legion? As a beverage, okay.
No, leave out.
You've seen all those?
Thank you, yes, we did those.
Little fair?
That's good, yeah, there's, there's.
I would move that we approve and sign this 2017 cereal malt beverages license for Sylvan Post 359.
I'll second. Any discussion? Uh, favor Sam?
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You guys ready for us?
Yes.
We're ready.
Kelly, thank you.
Um, well, we are here today to talk about Sylvan Grove and a CDVG housing grant application that they're putting together. Um, two years ago, 2015, Sylvan submitted an application and they did not get the grant. Um, and this is a three hundred thousand dollar grant that could go towards demolition of dilapidated houses or rehab of houses. And at that time, in 2015, when we were putting the application together, we came to the county to help with local support to try and figure out what, on the local side of things and the match side of things, where we can come up with some funding. And that is the letter that the county submitted in the grant application agreeing to support basically thirty-five hundred for waiving fees at the landfill for the houses. And so basically, we're back again to talk about it. In 2015, the reason that they did not get the grant back then, or that we were told through the Department of Commerce, is that they really, the community really needed to do a lot of cleanup of their own. It was kind of one of those things, why should we put our money into a community that has not done a great job of cleaning up itself and maintaining itself? And so Sylvan has done a wonderful job, especially this last year, of really taking a hard look at its community and doing code enforcement. They've hired a code enforcement officer. They redid their junk vehicle ordinance. They've been enforcing that. And their enforcement officer has just done a really good job of reaching out to residents and working with them to get a lot of cleanup done. So with that, we feel a lot more prepared to submit the application this year. And so we're going to go for it. And that's kind of a little bit of background, I guess, but I'm going to turn over to Carol Torkelson. She's the Housing Coordinator for the North Central Regional Planning Commission. Kind of talk a little bit more.
Kelly, excuse me, would you introduce the other three?
Oh, sure. Jennifer Halden, City Clerk for Sylvan.
Okay.
And Keegan? What was your last name?
Bailey.
Bailey, okay. And she's going to be working with Carol.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, well, like Kelly said, Sylvan has, were seri- took it seriously when the Department of Commerce told them their town needed to be cleaned up. Uh, if you haven't had a chance to drive through Sylvan, I think you'll notice a big difference. After their cleanup day at the end of April, we went back and looked again. We identified a few properties, I think there were actually twenty-five on the list that needed to be cleaned up, and they again took a hard stance on cleaning those up. So they have worked really hard to get to this point. And they right now have applications, pre-applications to do six demos in their community and eight, nineteen rehab. So I believe one of those demos is a county hospital house, one the hospital owns. And I think that's how we kind of tagged this thirty-five hundred, was to, to take that home out. And that's really what we're asking for, again, just your support with waiving those fees and just to show that you are supportive of their efforts to move forward with this project.
So basically, we are going to spend the first thirty-five hundred and then anything additional to our landfill would be picked up on the grant, is that?
Yes, yeah, the grant does pay for all those costs. That's part of what their request of the three hundred thousand would be for the demolition of that.
And you're saying that the thirty-five hundred dollars is approximately what this one particular building, and it is county-owned?
It's the, it's the house beside the medical building. They own that little section right there.
Okay.
So it's that one that sits right behind there.
Okay, and that's the estimated cost to the landfill, so we would be covering that.
Yeah.
We were all, all set to tear it down once and then they said there was interest from somebody on the house, so planned to run away.
So basically, the idea is, I mean, at some point, the county would have to spend that anyway. So why not roll it into this to show?
We would waive it for the hospital property, since it's a county function.
So we can kind of use that to help.
As a match, basically.
My other question is, is when they do this, they are aware that they need to get the stuff sorted so we don't get a bunch of rock and dirt and fill up our land?
Right, well, that would be up to the construction company, or the demolition company, whoever was actually doing the demolitions. But I think, my, my understanding is that the county would be doing the demo, isn't that?
No, it would be a contractor.
It would be a contractor.
Yeah, we'll go through the process.
You'll be a, be the contractor.
Yeah, and, and they will have to just follow what the landfill regulations are.
So they will be inspected and?
Right, yeah, we have that conversation with them early on about, you know, how this is what the landfill, I usually get a fee, great fee from the landfill and say, okay, here's your fee and here's what your requirements are. And so that's.
So the demolition will be of the houses will all be done by probably one contractor?
Yes.
They won't be individuals?
No, it's easier to do it all in one, yeah.
All right.
So once we get them trained on it one house and they, they understand what the process is.
Yeah, willing parties? That they're to have the houses throw down or?
We have, um, we have six pre-applications. One of them actually is one that the city's in the process of condemning, so they're probably maybe not willing, but they will be because it's going to be through the city's process, so. Uh, but the others are, yes.
So the city is now taking possession of any of the property, but this is all?
Yeah, all, at least five of the demos are, and people wanting that.
Wanting, that, that have?
Yeah.
Their own property, right?
They're, they're the ones that's creating.
Okay, all right.
I see no problem.
You want, you want to draft another letter? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking that basically it can be the same letter, just a new date. I don't see a need to necessarily change anything, but.
I have a question. The disposal of dilapidated housing program. Is that an ongoing?
That's a county program.
And is it still ongoing now? We're understanding that it is, right?
Is it, or, or is it not being used? I mean, on the, for the county?
Yes, 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 we are, yeah, yeah.
And so, I mean, it's something that the city could opt into if they wanted to.
Yes, 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 it is, it is.
So that's a conversation they need to have themselves, but.
Well, basically, as the city takes possession of the house, what it's going to do is it's a draw city, then they re waive the landfill fees, is what it is.
If the city does it, if it's not an individual?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but you still charge the, the owner, even though the city takes possession of the house, you're still charging the owner that third, right? Or not? Because my understanding is a third, third, third.
If the, if the owner signs the property over to the city, which is what they've done quite a bit in Barnum.
Okay.
And, uh.
Yeah, the city owns property.
Okay.
Of the house. Where it's at.
Would you like a copy of what the?
I would, because I guess I'm not, I didn't really understand how that worked.
Don, do you have this letter available?
I am not sure.
Okay.
I'll give you a copy.
Um, and I guess in terms of what happens, the application is due at the end of August?
At the end of August.
End of August. Probably won't be until January before we find out whether we get it or not, so.
And it'll probably be about a year from now before we're ready to start getting the contractors in and start. And actually, the state's moved it to where they need a certain number of rehab homes done, so the demos aren't early on, so it could be even two years from now by the time we got to do the demo, so.
Does anyone compile it before and after visual to turn in as far as part of the application process?
Um, we, they actually want pictures of every home that we're going to do. Um, and we, through our office, always take before and after pictures. Not necessarily of the demos, but I have recently done some of those because it's, when you take that house down and then you see the lot after it's all cleaned off, it's huge difference. And so I do have some of those pictures, but we do do before and after pictures of all the rehab houses.
I guess I'm thinking along the lines of if there was a potential rejection based on a lack of mobility within the community, do we have evidence of that happening prior to our new application?
We, we do have pictures that we took after the state had been there and said they weren't going to do the application. Kelly and I drove around and took pictures of, and actually, a council member drove and noted eighty vehicles that met their untagged or inoperable ordinance. Um, and so we have pictures and then, um, I don't know that we took pictures of how good they cleaned up. And we did it, I know you've got some of these pictures.
I've got some, yeah. Some during, and then a few that were after.
Yeah, and then, uh, we did make another trip around, but we could go back to those same sites that we have the original pictures and we could do, this is what it looked like before and now, after, but.
I actually think that would probably be a good idea. And I know, you know, Dean, the code enforcement officer is probably taking a lot of pictures, so.
Yeah, just as a validating effort, since you might, you don't want to hit the same wall again. You can prove that there has been attention to that request.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
Because I find it kind of puzzling that they offer money for cleanup, but then say the cleanup has to happen before the cleanup happens.
Yeah, they actually threw, it, you know, Dane Hansen, when they came out and did their cleanup campaign money, that was huge to communities. Uh, the Department of Commerce doesn't want to, they don't offer any kind of assistance towards that, but they just want the, the community to, to take it on themselves, which is, that's a big task. And so by having that money available from Dane Hansen to help jumpstart that, that was big. And the application will reflect that, of their efforts and that.
I mean, the money that was already spent.
Well, the tonnage of stuff that came out of Sylvan was huge. I mean, it was just like six, seventy tons. It was crazy, so, yeah. I'm not sure where all those tires came from, but.
Yeah.
There was a bunch.
Yeah, there was a bunch.
But those will be, that will be part of the application and just talking about what their efforts have been.
We're all in agreeance.
Any other questions?
I don't know if that needs to be a motion or?
Don, well, we need a motion, but we won't, we won't do it until we have a, until we have it in front of us to sign.
We will actually waive the fee with a motion.
So we have the, we have the other copy, yeah, the letter. When the letter is presented to us, we'll make a motion, have it signed.
So probably next week, at your?
Well, I think maybe if we can get it, we will have it quicker. We may have it today.
Can you do it, Kelly?
We don't have to be writing.
Yeah, I mean, I could.
Onless letters are?
No, but I can write it and send it to you and by next week's meeting.
I think the issue is Carol just needs it when she puts it in with the application.
Right, and I just, yeah, but I can, I know the amount, and so we can work towards that, so we're, we're.
So you don't need to tell them?
Next week will be fine.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any reports on economic development, Kelly? Thank you.
No, I guess nothing that I'm.
All right, sorry.
To talk about or, no. Not unless you, do you have any questions on anything or?
Okay, thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Come on in, Michael.
Bob. Morning.
Five minutes ahead. For a change.
For a change, all right. We can get out of here five minutes.
Morning, Bob.
I didn't know.
Good morning. Cool and down out there?
Yeah.
That resolution, Mike, you might want to talk about, we can get that off, started with. Need to transfer some funds.
I don't understand this change.
Yeah, what these funds are is, uh, basically the federal dollars we now get from the feds through KDOC. Uh, they were once funds that we used on a five-year bridge program. That program has since went away several years ago. So they set up what's called the Federal Fund Exchange. It's a ninety-ten. State keeps ten percent, we get ninety percent of it. And by doing that, we initially let those monies set at KDOC until there was enough money to do a project with. And the feds saw that the state had a large amount of money sitting there, wasn't being used. So the state has recommended that all the counties use up that entire money each year. So what we can do with that money is there's a certain list of approved projects the money can be spent on. So we use it every year to turn into the state as our chip seal job. But once we receive those monies back from them, we transfer them into a fund that we can use them for a bridge project or something like that. And the amount of money we get from the state is no longer very appealing. It used to be getting close to around two hundred doll, two hundred thousand dollars, if I remember right, and now we're around sixty thousand a year. So they've changed the formula to where the money goes to where the population is versus total number of square feet of deficient bridge deck. It used to be based off the square feet of deficient bridge deck and that no longer qualifies, so. And after we get done chip sealing, we'll return the remainder of that to get it also. That there was carryover from last year, our bill was greater than what they had for money, but they just held it instead of swiping it, so.
I move to approve Resolution 2017 dash fifteen, transfer funds from the road fund to the special highway improvements fund. The amount of five thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and nine cents. Sorry.
I was sorry.
Any discussion? Um, say hi.
Hi.
On the, uh, Whacker drainage pro- project that we discussed last week, after looking through my budget, the eight thousand we thought we had, we only have around four thousand. We bought a culvert for the Macash Arch. And that culvert was right around the four thousand dollar mark, a little over. So we have a little over four thousand in that account. So something I did is we do have a nine foot by ten inch by forty foot long steel tank car in our north lot. And I visited with the railroad yard that makes these half tanks to see if they'd be interested in either purchasing that tank car for us or converting it to a half culvert for us to help offset the cost on that.
What, what were the dimensions you said?
Uh, nine foot, ten inch by forty feet long. So the diameter is a little bit bigger than what they proposed, and the length's just the shape longer. About a foot and a half or so. So it'd be very comparable. It wouldn't hurt us any, we'd only benefit on drainage, but. Bob's going to do some looking. Bob Straight, the salesman there, is going to do some looking and checking with the company and see what they can work out. Kind of what I proposed to them ultimately was to potentially sell it to them for future use for us due to the fact that if we just have them come pick it up and haul it down there to make for the first one, we're not only going to have shipping charges, we're also going to have crane charges on it. But if we bought the initial set, went up, had them installed, then on the back haul, the crane can mobilize back to Lincoln, load it on their trailer that's going to be returning anyways, and do it that way instead of having additional cost in the mobilization of both crane and truck. But he's going to do some checking to see what kind of numbers might work out and everything there too, but, you know. There's a couple places I think we could potentially squeeze some money to get the project out of. Number one being our fuel expense was a little bit lower this spring. So I think we should be able to pull the project off.
Totalling, estimating, an estimated total of?
I'm going to say it's probably going to run us in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand.
Eighteen thousand of that for the culverts? And?
I haven't been with the crane company yet.
Seven thousand, are you, that seven thousand is that materials only? The additional seven is that the wing wall material? The additional seven is that the wing wall materials?
It's going to be wing walls material and it's going to be the crane rental. Because I'm unsure on what the crane rental is going to be. And the exact design, I'm still discussing with the engineer if we want to put it in as a SKU or if we want to put it in just head-on, that will change the materials needed.
Okay, I'm confused though, because eighteen thousand was for one of two needed at one location.
Yes, and we're only doing the one location for now, I believe.
Eighteen and eighteen is thirty-six.
Yeah, we're just going to do the one location.
But we needed two eighteen thousand dollar culverts in one location?
No.
Two total eighteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
For the one location, it was eighteen thousand for the two halves.
Okay.
I don't, I don't even have those numbers with me. See my file back at the office on the project.
So, are you not appropriating costs to the county for vehicle, labor, fuel for this particular project?
We will when the project's done, and we'll get costs through there.
But this twenty-five thousand can't, can't account for that, correct?
Correct. And that's an estimate for total cost. You know, until we know what our sheet piling is going to cost, the additional steel for the toe walls it's going to cost, crane rental, you know, there could easily be five to seven thousand dollars.
So, you're saying materials and contracting total for one location, twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
That does not include any accounting for the cost to the county?
Correct.
For equipment, man hours, et cetera.
They're heat furnishing with her, so we've got to move it. Still considering cheaper than a contract.
Oh, it's definitely cheaper. And you're saying that the whole of that amount is left in your fuel budget? The total of that, twenty-five thousand, or...
Probably not. We're going to have to pull it out of some others. But see, it's all underneath one fund.
I know it's all together, but I'm asking...
But for our line items, I think I can pull most of it out of that, probably not all.
Are you going to consider crane rental contracting? Is that under contractual?
Yeah.
He offered five thousand, so...
I'm sorry?
He offered five thousand.
Yeah, five thousand. Well, but this is for Union though, correct, or is this the thirtieth?
No, it was his drive, his road.
This would be on the thirtieth.
Okay.
He said he was basically, he only wants to use that road, so he was offering five thousand.
And I need to visit with him to see if he'd be willing to donate dirt for any other projects there too, if not, that will win our cost of, on the other projects.
I guess, you know, I'm a contender if you think you can make it work, make it work.
Yeah.
I believe he said October to January was more than God to do it, so...
I would...
So, it would be after January? Think you can get it down this year before October?
I'm hoping.
Okay.
I'd like to look at the month September right there, when the chip sealing and patching through most dogs. So, shoot for September, if it stands in October a little bit, we might be all right with that.
With him.
Have we been renting a crane from somewhere in particular?
I don't know, we've never had to rent one yet.
Crane rental in Burco. Burco still there?
I believe so.
There's this crane rental and sales of Selina.
There are several places in Selina.
Seventy-five, eight-two-seven, forty-eight, seventy-eight. You didn't talk to anyone to know what...
Not yet, I haven't...
...potential price is. I'm just wondering if like, I mean, with equipment rentals, you know, sometimes you get a week rate versus a daily rate. You know, what, like you said about coming back through and loading what we have to send to them. But is that one large piece that we have?
Yes. It's large, something that we don't have equipment to handle. I know it was very thick walled and when we unloaded it, it was almost more than our crane wall, so...
So, I think what we need to see then would be a breakdown, an itemized cost sheet of what you're proposing. I think that'd be the, I mean, this is a good start, but you'd have to have the crane rental approximate cost, you know, what your daily rate would be, what your week rate would be, the number of days that you propose it would take to get that, you know, moved, the dirt moved and oak, the, you kind of, we probably need a timeframe, a timeline. A, B, C equates to dollars and time. You follow what I'm getting at?
Not a hundred percent.
I think he can provide a cost breakdown, basically, estimated cost breakdown.
I'm not going to be able to tell you exactly how many days it's going to take our crane to do it. That's one of the big ifs, you know? It depends on how many people I have available that day, it depends on the weather and all of that. You know, if I was a contractor, I could bid that job pretty easy because you're going to shoot for those days that you're not working and stuff like that, but it makes it real hard.
You like contractor paddock?
I guess I do.
They know what it costs and then they allow X amount of issues to come up through projects. I don't think it has to be after it, before they're after it.
I think this is a good example of where we should maybe contemplate the proposal that Michael O'Hare brought with Kirkham Michael as far as, I think, was his name Brian Yost?
Tanner.
Tanner, excuse me. I do think we should consider something like this. I don't know what you're willing to commit to. I know that we haven't budgeted for it in the current year. I think it might be helpful, just as we're discussing here, so that you have a reference point. And if there is someone available consistently, hopefully you could manage your time so that when that person is here, we're looking at two and three, four projects at a time, getting these outlines built over the period of a few months so that we're efficient. And then, for, for example, something like this, that may be on a week that he doesn't have something to look at, that may be something he could help you put together. I do personally believe that we should bid that out just because it would be professional to do so and there are other providers of those types of services. And we now at least have a guideline to go by from what he put together in his proposal. Is that something that the commission is willing to look at heading into the next budgeting year?
I'd like to see, I assume he's charging us hourly rate for what he's doing up there on the...
Correct.
I'd like to see it compare us then to what the hourly rate is for doing that versus the eight hundred dollars a month plus time.
Mileage.
Yeah, and time. He started time too for anything.
No, he's above the day.
Yeah.
If he had to work up additional plans.
Yeah.
But is that, that's pretty much a seven or eight hour day, correct? Because he, he said that he would spend a whole day here.
Yeah.
The contract for an engineer to be... Yes, yeah.
On retainer, basically, for a business on retainer.
What was the proposal amount? I don't have that in front of me.
Eight hundred.
I'm sorry?
Eight twenty-five.
That included the mileage, correct?
That's not including, so, exclusionary of mileage.
That's just one, that's just, I assume, four days.
That'd be...
One day a month.
One day a month.
So, he said the hours...
Well, I have this one day for a month, uh, one day, yeah.
So, if he took eight hundred twenty-five, five, five, eight...
It's a hundred and three dollars an hour approximately. So, could you ask him what he charges per hour when we do contract with him to draw up plans or to look at a project? Do you know what, what did we have to pay for the last time that he came with you? Did he, did he bill you?
Not yet, we haven't received a bill yet.
I'm not against doing it, but, you know, what I'm looking at is you're talking nine thousand dollars a year. Basically, whether he does anything or not, for the most part. And I'd like to see how that compares to where we end up with our rate on the project.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I think we should compare. I just think it'd be nice for our department to have a resource on hand regularly since we're dealing with issues that we seem to be ill-equipped.
But it does. Regardless of the retainer, he can call him, land on project, that's what it's saying. Are we going to spend more on the retainer than we are just hiring by the hour to come in and get projects? That's what I'm...
My, my biggest fear is, is that we do have more work than we can get accomplished, you know? So, therefore, having twenty projects that are worked out five years in advance, get all that done in one year, and then is the retainer really necessary?
Well, can I, this is going to be a comparison of apples to apples, but when we had the contract with NextEd by our computer service, we use them more than we do if we have to pay them an hour. So, just, you're going to kind of save that, that, you know?
Yeah, but he's not...
Or he might be hesitant to actually call them and have them come and help because of the cost and the fear of the cost. He knows that cost is already there, he might not be as hesitant to call them.
Yeah, but he's going to charge for exceeding that eight hundred dollars, correct? If he exceeds, if he exceeds the eight hundred dollars worth of work, he's going to charge extra for it.
In the contract, it said any additional hours to the one day would be billed. But then again, while this process starts off, let's say for the first year, you're going to be able to run every project past him, maybe not the miniscule ones that you feel competent, but let's say you have a priority list, he's going to be able to spend less time on those that aren't required for, you know, that don't require as much of his expertise and more time on those projects which do require his expertise. Otherwise, every time you call him, he's going to do an entire workup for every, you know, it may... What I'm saying is, let's say you have Project A, which if he were contracted, he could spend two, two hours explaining it out of his eight-hour day. But if you called him separately for Project A without this contract, he may take an entire day and bill you for an entire day to work on that project because it's at his leisure, not on our time, in our, in our realm. So, I would think that the efficiency factor would play a lot into those eight hours. You're sitting, you, you have someone available to you for an entire day versus phone calls where there are lapses in time between your communication. I suggest that we just take the proposal that Tanner Yost brought and outline it as far as we are soliciting for eight hours a month, one full day to be contracted on a twelve-month basis and just put it out there and see what we get back.
I guess you could solicit for proposals. I don't know who you're going to swap in.
Well, there's, hold the list up. Might not be satisfied if the ones that turn in the lowest bids, so...
Well, we don't necessarily have to take the lowest bid.
No, but I think just a comparative.
Below us is past bid.
And we do need to find out like Terry said about what his regular hourly rate is. In other words, how much in a deal are we getting on the hourly rate with a contract versus paying outright?
You know, if you're going to come out and plan several years in advance and then not do the retainers for a couple of years, there might be an advantage to it, but...
When is the last time the county worked with an engineer, not necessarily contracted, but on a continual basis?
We worked with John Kachet, he was available.
Kachet?
John Kachet. He retired, he, he was the county engineer there at one time.
Back in the eighties, he was actually a crane engineer.
In the eighties, so, it's been over twenty years, give or take.
No, he continued. He just retired a couple of years ago.
Somebody last, yes.
Per year basis.
Up until this year?
Up until maybe the time.
Probably two years.
Two years ago, probably.
Two, three.
So, was he contracted then, after he was employee, or was he just paid?
No.
Three years.
Back in the eighties, whatever it was, the thing. Didn't he do Mitchell in Lincoln County?
Yeah, two days here, three days there, three days here, two days there.
Ironically, I think we're looking at a timeframe in which there was deterioration as well after that, so I think it'd be good to just consider that. Do you have any update for us on the Mobile 311 program?
I'm putting together a lot of data for them. As far as implement, implementation date, their timeframe is about probably six weeks out. They recommend going quite some time before you allow the public to start using it to get your feet wet, understand how to build it.
So, we are contracted now?
Yes.
Sounds good. And then, do we have a concrete update? I haven't heard about that in a while.
Yes. For OS 145?
No, I was actually referring to the concrete that we had crushed.
Okay, they completed last week.
They finished last week. Have we been billed?
I believe they left a bill with Dager, yes.
So, that would be this month?
Well, yes.
July?
July, sure.
Do you know what the total was?
It was in the neighborhood of around eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand?
Eight thousand, seven, seventy, eight or somewhere in that neighborhood.
And do we have a plan for what's to be done with the pile that was crushed?
I wouldn't say it gets all planned. The material that we received, I'm not overly happy with due to the weather conditions when it was crushed. It was very wet, a lot of mud stuck to the rock, and it's a pretty dirty material, which is what I anticipated. A lot of that had to do with the way it was piled over the years. It wasn't segregated real well, dirt and rock, it rigged everything, just got pushed to pile. And when they initially looked at the pile and were just looking at it, it looks like it's all pure concrete, but rain and wash have gone down over the years.
Have you considered even renting some sort of sifting screen sifter to be able to utilize what is there for highway material?
In time, but at this moment in time, no, I haven't looked at getting a cost on it.
But we had approximately a hundred thousand in the landfill fund that we were going to look at spending for this particular project and we're up to eighty at that, correct? Those are the numbers that I remember.
Then that's all working. Then that's all working.
We've got something, probably let an engineer take a look at and think about a little bit. Don't wanna take all your fines out of it. If you do that, you're gonna have a very unhappy traveling public.
Okay, I have received over the last two weeks, several pictures and just notations about different areas. And that doesn't mean that today it's exactly the way that it looks in the picture, because I've just compiled them over the last two weeks. And a lot of people have said that they've seen a lot of good improvements. Nothing here is extremely dangerous or emergent, but there are issues that should probably be looked at and maybe gone over from administrative point of view and then, you know, work down to whoever, whoever's route it is, or what exactly needs to be done. A, a few of these roads, it's a, it's a continual issue along this entire road, so I don't have a cross-section on some of these. But that was sent to me for 175th and 170, I'll just have that pass on to you, 175th between Pike and Ry. And maybe you could explain to me on the map, the road that the landfill is on is 170th, does it change to 160th? How does that, or... There's a diagonal that's not 170th, but it starts as 170th. So it actually shifts there, and it's... Okay, okay. So 170th and Oak, there are some culvert issues here and some deterioration of what looks like a bridge, but it's been piled over pretty heavily. So there's a lot of grass growing up along the edge of the ridge of the road. And then we have 200, um, between Sage and Quartz. And I know a few people have mentioned this before, and maybe when it was you guys, about some of the farming has come over to the ditch. But if there is no ditch, I don't know how we can control that. We need to maybe look at some of the the process of pulling ditches. We, you were, you had been talking about some of the farming has led right up to the edge of the road. Um, but in the case where there is no ditch for that very visual separation, I think we need to take care of that. Here's one where there's no ditch, and the farming is right...
We not only need to take care of that, but we need to have an action in place for when they decide to reform the shed.
And I think I've...
Most of it, we have to begin with. And it's far advanced. I think I've provided you guys with that once before, but I'd ask about being in the office, I can look at.
Well, you have to consider the physicality of it. I mean, a ditch that is any greater than a few, you know, a foot or so, is not even going to be physically able to be farmed in. So we do need to consider what we're expect, expecting as far as the depth of the ditch along the road.
I'm not following that.
If you have a ditch that's this high or greater, no one is going to physically drive over the ditch to farm between these, I, look at the pictures I showed you. There is no ditch at all. That's why it's farmed right up to the road.
I can show you, the ditches that were as high as this table, and they farmed and planted halfway up on the road. They start down the bottom and start pounding stuff in, and they start forming their disc up a little further and follow the road down. I thought that when I was on the plate.
Okay, well, then we, then we do need to address that. No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, well, I guess I'm unaware that that happens, that they, that they have farmed where there is an actual physically visual ditch, but I haven't seen that.
It's all over.
It's everywhere.
There you go, about every field in the country, and they're, they're not, they're on the ride, I would hope so.
If you have a question, you want to address the chair?
Can we continue our business before we take comments from the public, please? Okay, what else you have, Michael, for us?
Concrete pour on OS 145, scheduled to potentially go down this week. They believe it's gonna go to next week. I think, they said they got a little bit eager in their estimation of when they're gonna pour. I imagine that, uh, the heat we've been having has slowed them down on getting rebar and everything tied, and forms all finished out and everything, so... And besides that, I would be perfectly fine with that. I think we need some cooler weather than what is forecasted this week.
I can't believe they let it pour that hot.
Well, they're gonna do it at night. It's gonna be a night, or a night and a half.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Bob?
Yeah, we're talking about the pipe down there in Macau, as they're working on trying to get it in and stuff. So they started the other day, and I went down, made them take it back out and start over, 'cause they were getting it set in there, little gaps under the stuff, so they're trying to get it straightened out today. And doing some spot graveling around, well, around corner there, several roads there, and I talked to Bob James about the gravel at Tipton, and he said he come down to 675 on it, from wherever it should have said. So I told him we'd probably try something here. Hopefully, I'll get it a day even, see if we can get a stretch ready up there by Watson's. Try some of it on, all the boys are getting a couple miles ready, graded up over here, trying to link in the corner to gravel. So while we're doing that, we'll go up there and get that and then come back this way. So we'll have a stretch of it done, and we can see how it looks, and we're gonna continue getting some material there. And other than that, I don't think I have a whole lot other right now.
Did you do, up there on 260th by Biggs is where, to the Metro County line, did you do a spot in there?
Uh, I got a one call in, a phone boy's supposed to be out there to meet Johnny today, and we're gonna do that whole mile through.
Okay, okay, I know, I know they've been having some trouble there.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Patient.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so, like I say, now he's supposed to meet the phone guy out there locate lines and stuff there today. So they can get started, grating it up, cleaning the ditches out, and we'll gravel it.
We down to 275 Fox, is that what it was? I forgot now, when I called you, or I catched you.
Yeah, I believe Bob made it, yeah, went down there.
Yeah, what it was, they started way off, pulling the windmill and mowing.
Oh, I see.
And they just went down through a long stretch, and then turned around and come back up through.
Okay. I figured there was some reason, so I'm gonna make sure.
Yeah. I kinda thought probably that's what it was, but I wasn't sure, till I went down there and see.
Do you have anything, Terry? Okay, yeah, we're ready.
Um, when you're talking about those ditches and stuff and the farmers and all that, uh, one hundredth from Union to Vine has a ditch on both sides, but yet we've got a lip like those pictures people showing Alexis. So the water can't even run into the ditches. So you know, some of this stuff is, I think, kinda as excuses. And, uh, you know, if the roads were properly maintained, we wouldn't have issues like that. We wouldn't have drainage issues. So, you know, it's a continual thing. If people would just start doing what they're supposed to do, have the proper training, a lot of this stuff wouldn't be happening. And yes, I admit, there are farmers out there who farm clear to the edge of the road. But there's still lots of roads out in my area that I can go down, they have ditches, and still have those, those ledges like that.
Norman?
Yeah, and Terry might be able to relate to this. What are your plans for that crushed concrete? Because four years ago, they started demolition of the old Stapleson International Airport in Denver. They're crushing this concrete. Now we have a water issue because of chemicals. You know what I'm talking, Terry, about the chemicals that are in concrete? They're contaminating groundwater, so be careful where you start spreading this crushed concrete. This has made the national news. You're crushing this old concrete, it's got some corrosive stuff, and if you put your hands on it, it'll burn your hand. So you're gonna have groundwater contamination. I thought I'd tell you this before you start spreading it.
Thank you, Norman. Steve, did you have something you wanted?
Oh, I just came to... I thought they did a great job grave my road.
Okay.
I mean, they did. It looked more than I expected, and it was kinda covered up some of my natural rocks that I had there.
They'll come back to the top eventually.
Eventually.
Eventually. It all comes to that.
Just got dented, if you slide off the road, you're gonna get out of the ditch.
Okay, yeah.
Where are you at on the sand?
Oh, I've gotta wait to see, wait for the road to settle down, and then we'll go down, and then I'll see the drainage situation. Whether you can do anything with the culverts there on the hill and stuff. You know, clean it out or whatever.
We'll be chip seeing probably most of August, or a bigger share of August, so you got mine, so... Probably needs some rain on it, doesn't seem to want rain anymore, so...
Yeah, I talked to Dave this morning, he said he thought it was coming down in pretty good shape now, after a couple rains, and he played it a couple times. He thought it was settling down, looking pretty good.
Yes, I would just say one more thing about the roads. I had a contractor stop at my house this past week, and asked me how, why Lincoln County off-roads were so good. And he could tell immediately when he crossed the county line in his business that he had come to Lincoln County, and he wished we would, uh, help his county get those back into the shape. So, you know, I, I guess there's a wide range of opinions, but I think it's important to know that this person lives in another county and travels in our county quite frequently. Yes, feels that the roads, the off-roads are in very good shape, so I thought I'd pass that on. There is some good news out there too.
Well, a lot of this, yeah, we've had some problems, we were way back. But with all the rains we had this year, it didn't help anything. They couldn't work on them, and they washed worse and stuff and what. So this just didn't just happen this year, it's happened fourteen, fifteen years ago, so it's been building.
Did we respond to Keith Jeffers' letter that came to the commission? I haven't heard about that yet.
Yeah, we haven't hauled anything, 'cause we're hauling, like I said, over there, I'm not gonna haul from Clear over there, bring a couple of those over here for him.
But have we been in contact with him?
No.
I'm a little bit concerned that, I mean, was that two weeks ago or three weeks ago?
One or the other.
So I think if we get correspondence from someone within two or three weeks, we should have at least spoken with them about, you know, what, what the plan is, or, or let them reiterate what the issue is. I'm concerned that when we have someone report something to us and, and we don't respond right away, that then they feel ignored. And that's why you get these negative comments, and why you feel that, I think you use the word that you're blamed. Um, just like Al Joe said, I've had compliments as well, and those aren't gonna stand out nearly as much. You know, they tell you, seven compliments for one negative is the communication style that makes you feel good. Well, I don't think we're gonna get seven compliments for every negative on the road situation. But when we let two, three weeks pass and don't respond to someone who takes the time to write us a full letter, I think it may, it looks bad on us, and we should probably respond. And this is a recurring theme that I've had when I get complaints, is that when they turn something in, we're not responding. And I'm really hopeful that this new program will do something in the way of at least the younger generation that wants to maintain contact with our highway department as far as seeing progress on things, or getting, um, feedback when they do turn something in. I'm hopeful for that. And I can't say that it will or won't work, but I think it's a step in the right direction. Now, for those that aren't gonna use technology, I, we do need to still at least make phone calls or, or write them a letter back in response. Yes, we got your concern, we will address it. My, my personal concern about what that letter said is that it had been an issue over a long period of time. Not just, like you said, about the rains this year. He had said that he'd been in last year about it. And some other people have said they've come in over multiple years. So I think, speaking to what Al Joe said, some people, some areas are of less concern than others. So the ones that feel neglected because they've turned in issues, and it's been multiple times that they've received zero feedback, that's gonna be where the complaints are.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard him complain.
Keith Jeffers?
We just put the pipes and stuff in last year. Now I knew there were some spots out there at that time, but we just done the pipes last year, what he was complaining about.
Okay. Well, I find that interesting that you haven't heard from him, because the commission, when his letter came in, said, oh, he does this all the time. That was the comment made.
The previous was at a different location.
Okay, it wasn't the same issue is what you're saying? Okay. Well, in that light, I, I would like to propose, I mean, let me, let me back up. I think, Terry, you and Michael were going to get together to talk about some sort of strategic plan. Do we have any foundational information for that?
Well...
We've discussed several options. I don't know if we have anything concrete.
At the end of the day, I think building the biggest building the plan's gonna come down to, uh, equipment needs that we do not currently have.
So do we have a list of the equipment that we'd like to have and potential costs there?
I do, yes.
Okay, that's great. That's, and do you think maybe the engineering contract could play a factor into putting this plan together?
I don't know.
Bridge side of things, they could assist in the plan, but even with the contract, what we'll need from the engineers, not, you know, probably it'll be an additional cost.
True, true.
Part of the problem is the tax, you know, you're talking about a lot of additional money to get the equipment to implement what we're wanting to do. I don't remember the number, it's close to a half million, wasn't it, on new equipment, four hundred million?
Between the excavator and the driver, it's right at a half a million, just a shade up there.
That's new, new cost. There, there may be some options on, on a used excavator, probably not a used driver.
Yeah, on the excavator, I guess there's some options. The ones that are presented were not a huge difference in cost. I think there's a fifty or sixty thousand dollar difference there. An equivalent standpoint, that is not a lot, but when you're looking at dollars and cents, it seems like a huge number. Yeah.
So in addition to that, I had brought up maybe a month or so ago about utilizing some volunteer help. And I know that we've had some conversations about liability, and I don't think we've come to a conclusion on what that means exactly, but I did get a lot of public feedback about that idea. And I think we do have people that are willing out there to spend the day, um, of their time to assist. And it could be something as simple as tree trimming, let's say, you know, to get these rightways taken care of, to get the, the road ditches cleaned up. Um, I think in order to get the community to give us responsible feedback and to see the progress that's being made, we should engage them. And just as you said about ditches being farmed over, you know, I'm gonna propose that we do a countywide mail-out and just say, these are some of the problems that our highway department is facing right now. And these are the ways in which you, as the public, can help us address these issues. You know, we can't maintain these ditches when they're being farmed over and the dirt's being rolled over into them. We can't properly, um, take care of all the tree trimming at once across the entire county due to lack of manpower. due to lack of manpower, so we'd like to ask for volunteers on a given day, and, you know, you have them sign a waiver. Nothing is 100% guaranteed, but I think if we don't attempt to engage people for...
Yes, you may have a five-minute recess. Okay, EMS director is on my agenda.
Okay, last week we had talked about the way in which the interim position was filled for the EMS director and the, the planning on how we decided whether it was going to be a part-time, full-time situation, et cetera. So my first question is, for the commission, are we going to budget as a full-time position or a part-time position going into the next year for the EMS director?
I guess my feelings is that, as I said, I felt we're gonna have to hold those budgets as neutral as we can, so there will not be room for a full-time director at this point. Now, it is an emergency position, and we can increase our budget to do it, but we're looking at probably a seventy, eighty thousand dollars to add on to the bottom line of the budget, which would be a mil or a mil and a half tax increase, so no, I, as, my feelings is no, we're not looking to do that.
Okay. Did you have input on that, Terry?
I don't see a big increase in budget.
So have we done a comparative analysis as to what the increase in cost would be to make a full-time position and cover that which, or partially that which the additional full-time position underneath that covers as far as hours and shifts?
I guess, I can say in my head what I, what I think the difference would be. I don't know if I've really studied on that.
So as of right now, the commission is planning to budget the emergency services as far as the ambulance department goes with a part-time director and the same amount of full-time personnel that we have currently.
I would say so.
Okay, and based on that then, I have two considerations for us to talk about. One would be the way in which we hired or appointed the current position. I think it's a point of concern, not just for this department, but for the commission as a whole, what our employment practices are, the way in which we are entertaining job openings, and how we are soliciting to fill those positions. I am concerned that we titled, we titled someone as temporary, but now we're just making it official and continuing through opinion. So how can we address the situation so that in the future, we or those after us know what the expectations are as far as, as far as a hiring versus an internal appointment? The way I'm seeing it now, the commission, as it has operated in the past and up until the present, basically, given any particular situation, you just have made or made a decision on the current circumstances, and there is no uniformity or conformity to the decision-making process. So I'm wondering, how can we make a uniform process by which we hire in order to have a standard and try not to deviate from that standard unless the particular situation calls as such?
I guess I would say the particular situation calls as such. We have done a thorough search for the EMS director prior to him being hired.
Can you hear anything out there?
No.
Yeah, I don't think...What you're saying is we searched for a director prior to appointing this one?
For six months, probably, and when we did a hire, it lasted, I believe, three months, something in that neighborhood. And I think the decision was that we were not gonna gain anything by going back through the process again, because, you know, it was extensive trying to find someone in the first place.
Okay, but we did receive applications and we did hire someone based on the application process to fill a job position.
That's correct.
But we did not return to that method, and you appointed someone as temporary. But I'm wondering how we got from that to making that a permanent solution? How did we go from appointing something that's temporary into a permanent solution?
I guess my opinion is because it's, it's working the way it is. Other than Katie, I think everybody else is pretty happy with it.
What did you just say? Did you really just single me out, Terry? That was not very kind of you, sir.
You seem to be the most vocal one about it, so.
Because you're not hearing the voices that are speaking to me.
Well, my concern is not, I mean, you're taking this to a personal level where the concern is with the individual situation. My concern is with the protocol. You know, if we were to just say every time a job opens up, we're gonna do an internal appointment, it's gonna be temporary, but later on, we're gonna make it permanent. That doesn't leave any room for justification on how the board operates.
I guess I'm comfortable with the decision, and you can have all the rest of the protocol as you want, but every situation's gonna be different, so.
So, okay, so my proposal to fix the situation then is as follows. I've drafted up a, just a rough draft here for a resolution for the county. As I noted last week, I found very few resolutions that we've done over the past decade that have anything to do with anything besides transfer of funds or your typical yearly things that you do as a commission to establish certain things that are actually required by the state. So there's very little that we've done internally as a county to kind of bring about a cohesive set of operations, and being that this commission is longstanding on two-thirds of the seats, there's a comfortability here that was expressed last week. You know, Terry, you said to me, well, we've been here longer than you, so you have your opinion, but we have ours. I'm concerned that the commission, as a formal body, is making decisions based on personal opinions. I really am. So my resolution...
I like the point I was trying to make, Alexis, was that we have been through a lot of these situations, you know, all these budget deals, a lot of this stuff for hundreds of years, and I think if you would take the time to really educate yourself on some of these things before you start forming your opinion, it might be beneficial.
My, my opinion has nothing to do with the individual circumstances, which you keep referring to, how it was such an individual circumstance.
I think your opinion, I think your opinion plays into a lot more than you think about it. I think that everyone, everyone's opinion plays into their decision here, so.
Terry, that's called projecting. If you believe that your personal opinion has something to do with it, you can't automatically assume that my personal opinion has something to do with it. That's projecting your viewpoint onto me. My point is looking from a bird's eye view at the Lincoln County commission. We need to consider what we do on a regular basis and have some conformity and unity. And so I've drafted up this potential resolution, which can obviously be amended, but it has a basic premise that other counties and other boards have adopted so that we have something general to go by. In the Kansas State Statute 19212, it reads about the powers of a board of commissioners, and there's a long list, but I chose the one that particularly pertains to us making our own internal protocols and procedures. So whereas Kansas State Statute 19212 reads, "Powers of Board of Commissioners, Sixth, to represent the county and have the care of the county property and the management of the business and concerns of the county in all cases where no other provision is made by law. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, that the proper procedure by which to employ personnel in any position shall be through a public advertisement of such job opening in not less than two separate methods in addition to the county website for not less than two consecutive weeks. Now therefore be it further resolved that each department head, when hiring within said department, will verify such advertisements as well as provide general information from applicants to be inspected by the Board of County Commissioners upon his or her recommendation of employment. It is further resolved and proclaimed that in the case of an urgent situation, a temporary appointment may be necessary, with the proper aforementioned act of advertising then immediately following to secure permanent employment accordingly under the provisions of this resolution." So in other words, I've tried to cover three bases with this. Number one is that we make, we make a resolution for the county commissioners to say that when we have a job opening, we're going to advertise it to the public in two different means, whether it be by newspaper or postings. In the state statute, it actually says that you can make postings and put them in areas where there's public traffic, you know, that we do that in two different means, so two different newspapers, a newspaper and postings, a flyer, something like that, and that we do it for not less than two consecutive weeks. That way we know that there's been a little bit of time lapse before we actually consider any applications that come in. The second part of this tries to address each department because departments may be responsible for their own hiring, and in that case, what would be nice is if the department brought in their recommendations for hiring, but when they do that, a little bit of background information, because I've sat on this panel in the last six months and we've made several hires where I've not even seen so much as a background check. And I'm not questioning the validity of what has happened, I'm simply saying that it would be our due diligence to make sure that when we do hire someone, we have a little bit of information, not just a name. We've literally hired people at this table on a name and a starting wage, and that concerns me. I think that if the department head is bringing us a recommendation for hiring, we can go by that recommendation, but there should be a little bit of paper trail verification. The last part of this pertains to a situation like we saw in what Terry described as this individual circumstance was special. So in the case of an urgent situation where we need to fill this position, we could do an appointment, and that would happen immediately and take place to cover this void. However, when that happens, we should still be required to go back and follow the procedures and open up that process of soliciting for applications so that we have a uniform process. Otherwise, like I explained earlier, basically, I know that you're comfortable with this as the chair and co-chair of this board, vice chair, excuse me, but maybe myself and the public is not comfortable with this process of just appointing at will for an undetermined length of time? It seems a little bit invalidated as far as giving equal opportunity employment, which it states that we are an equal opportunity employer. I don't see that when we do internal appointments without any regard to an advertisement for position. So I would appreciate if you guys could give me a little bit of input as far as what kind of amendments you'd like to see on a resolution like this.
I guess I'd wanna study it some more.
What parts of this haven't we done, Deborah?
We advertised in one of two places now. We have a check reference, and while that would happen, we just never asked to see it. That's not an open record, so it would not be presented to the public. We would have to do that in a separate session. I would be interested in maybe being allowed to have a copy of it, take a look at it.
Sure, Dawn has one. I only printed off the floor, so. Mr. Chairman, you said, what have we not done? You didn't do any of these things with the title of our session here, which is EMS Director. You didn't do, you didn't do any of this when it came to appointing the interim position? So it's a perfect example of why we need something like this.
Three months before, we did it for a long time.
And you found someone, however, it did not work out for whatever reason, but that doesn't mean that...
There were actually three that didn't work out for whatever reason. Four, one didn't show up for the interview.
And some positions are going to be high turnover, but that doesn't mean that you deviate from the process of hiring. What amendments would you propose to a resolution such as this?
I told you, without studying it, without Deborah looking at it, to the human resource officer, I would, I would wipe her input on anything that I did start appointing, so.
Okay, so I move to have human resources do a revision of my proposed resolution.
I think you need a motion to have it there. I want you to look it over.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Motion dies, lack of second.
Of course.
Move on to the agenda, distributing taxes.
The next item on the agenda, it pertains to public funding for third-party solicitors. So as I expressed last week, we have several groups that come to us yearly and request funding from our county, and my primary concern is to know that that funding is going to directly or indirectly revert itself back to within our borders. Not saying that that can be done 100% of the time, but I am concerned as far as what the stipulations are for the board making any demands upon these people. As it stands, without a resolution, any single person or group out there in the public can come and sit before the board and request money for any given reason and have zero accountability. I'm not being accusatory in saying that this happens regularly or that it has happened at all, but the, the consideration should be there that anyone can solicit money for any reason, and the commissioners have no provisions in place in order to narrow down that demanding of public funds. And so without some sort of procedure, protocol, or in this case, a resolution, we won't be able to oversee that money. I believe that we are responsible from the time we collect that money until the time that money does its purpose, be it a service or a purchase of a material. And so I know last week, Terry, this is what you had commented to me about, saying that you know what all these organizations do, and it's based on the fact that you have been here long enough to know what they do. However, I can point out that the administration of these organizations changes, sometimes frequently and sometimes not at all, but given the event of a change, how, how do you ever reconnect with that organization, making them re-represent what the original intent was, or making them be accountable for what the past organizational leaders have or have not done? I guess to rephrase the question, how, how do, how can we, how can we as a board make other people accountable to the money that we give them freely?
I have a question.
I believe they're all 501(c)(3)'s for the most part. You can go look, anyone can go look and see what happens.
Yeah. I was under the impression that if you are a 501(c)(3), that, that anyone really can request and get information from them, you know, I mean...
Yeah, they probably should have, they bring it to every meeting anyway, but I think that as a 501(c)(3), that you can contact them yourself and request to see where their monies are going, and they will tell you.
Well, prime...
Because it's a public record supposedly.
It depends on how they view the statute, I'm sure, and how much withholding they want to do, but a prime example of the antithesis of what you're saying is that we had several proposals right in this... proposals right in this room from a privately owned company that wanted to solicit grant money from us. So given that circumstance, I think we should have a protocol, not just for the, not just for the nonprofits, but also for those kinds of situations where people are soliciting this type of funding. And even if you are a nonprofit, it doesn't mean that you're going to be accountable. There is no, I don't see a problem with our board saying, "We would like you to come and do this for us because we are funding you with whatever amount." You know, as far as I'm concerned, you can be a benevolent nonprofit, but if we give you $20,000 and our county only receives $500 of that, I would think that the commission should be concerned that our Lincoln County citizens are funding events and organizations and services that happen outside of our borders.
Well, I agree that there should be something if, if, if the person asking is questionable. A lot of the groups are not questionable, they're well-known. You know, I mean, there are some smaller ones that are...
Well, just for example, we signed a proclamation with the Red Cross with our emergency management department and it was so, I believe it was Red Cross, and it was so that we could have access to their services in the event of a disaster. Now, if you look up the 501(c)(3) information about the Red Cross, you may be very disheartened to see what those top executive employees actually...
I don't necessarily back the Red Cross. It's like a lot of the other things.
But it's a nonprofit and it's got a good name.
You have to have it, you have to have it, you have to have those things. I mean, without a disaster, what are you gonna do? You think everybody in the community is gonna step up and go help? Good luck. Lincoln County, Lincoln does not support anything if you look. They really don't. I mean, you know, as the group and people, they don't really back the fire. The fire fighters are all volunteer, crying out loud, you know? I mean, we don't do anything to really acknowledge any of our public stories. We don't. And I'm sure the county, they'll even back me up on that, that the city itself doesn't do anything. We don't back anything. I've asked questions before about it, so, you know, I mean, as far as where, where the money and stuff is going, if you, you know, you've gotta use your gut feeling in smaller communities too, I mean, but I, I really, it, it's a two-sided thing, it really is. It's two sides and, I don't know, I guess just for me, it's just getting to be a head nutting against the wall. It's just...
On, on the fire departments?
On everything. It's just, we need to, we need to pick the battle and fight it instead of lashing out at everything.
Okay, well, what I'm addressing here is that the commission be responsible by creating something so that we have, basically, you know, your group comes in and we have requests of you. So is there something that you would like to offer that I could put on paper in addition to what I have as far as a prerequisite in order to obtain public funding?
I have not been aware of anybody that came to this commission that asked for taxpayer money. They did not provide as fairly detailed what that was going to do, what they were gonna use it for, and how it would benefit this county. We've had, all of them that came in here have been very kind and told us what they do and told us how many people they serve in this community. We can have tiles and rings of resolutions, but we need to do the work that needs to be done in this thing. And I, to me, this is a waste of my time. Let's move on.
Okay.
Continuing Ed.
Well, I'll read the resolution.
No, we'll move on to continuing Ed.
This is my segment on the agenda and I shall read this resolution. Whereas Kansas State Statute 19212 reads, "Powers of Board of Commissioners, Six, to represent the county and have the care of the county property and the management of the business and concerns of the county in all cases where no other provision is made by law. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, that there shall be continual and necessarily obligations of any third parties interested in an award of tax money distributed by Lincoln County. They are as follows: Present in a timely manner a budget request approved by the group's authorizing board members. Provide, prior to a funding request, a detailed analysis of the annual expenditures of such organization, particularly relating to Lincoln County as a recipient of services or funds. Produce any and all necessary documents to validate the organization's existence as it claims to operate in accordance with local, state, or federal law. Proof and results of an external financial audit within the last five years shall be required and properly comply with Kansas Open Meetings and Kansas Open Records Act." I move that Lincoln County Board of Commissioners adopt, revise and adopt a resolution similar to what I presented.
Is there a second? Motion dies, lack of second. Excuse me, we're, we're going to be interrupted. Mike has wants to see us. Come on, Matt.
You have four seconds. Can I have a loud ear? Can everybody just count it? Okay?
I think loud left. Loud left.
So going back to what you had said, Aljo, about groups coming before us and presenting their information...
We're moving on to continuing Ed. Thank you.
We actually had a group come in and twice I've requested that they come back to give us a breakdown of the financial distribution that they've made within our county because, yes, they gave us a list of what their expenses go toward in their operating expenses, but I had made a specific request and we even added it into the minutes because of my request as a corrected portion of the minutes, that they come back and detail out what has done, been done within our borders specifically pertaining to the money that was solicited from Lincoln County. So there are two specific examples of that in our minutes, if you wanted to look them up, since you said there weren't any.
I did not say that.
You said you weren't aware of any and that I would...
I said I wasn't aware of anyone that came to this commission that didn't tell us what they were doing in our county.
And that's exactly, yes, there are two specific examples of where I have requested...
I understood what they were doing in your, our county, maybe you didn't, but I did. Let's move on, please.
Are you not aware that I have made these points on the agenda so that we could continually discuss them and make them clear as not to avoid continually week after week?
As I said, we'll move on to continuing Ed.
So in other words, if we don't go along with what you say you wanna do, then you're gonna bring this up every week. Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is I find these points of interest to be very serious and duties and obligations of the board, which leads me to my next point.
We don't seem to be as concerned about it as you are, and I think that we can discuss them every week in the next two years. It's not gonna make any difference.
Okay, and that brings me to my next valid point. You have both expressed as longstanding members of this board in the same positions that because of the longevity of your term, that you understand things and are unable to explain because you just innately have this superior knowledge. And that seems to me to be something that newcomers like myself or any potential future elected officials should have clarified. So given that situation, I had asked earlier on in the year if either of you had attended the new commissioners initiation, it's not really an initiation, the, it's a, it's an informative seminar for new commissioners and it basically gives an overview of commissioners' duties. And both of you had related that you had not attended that, you had attended other pointed seminars based on, I think, Aljo, you said budgeting? I'm not sure, Terry, what, what you said you had attended for educational? But I would just like to share at this point that when I attended my first and thus far only educational seminar back in January, the basic outline of commissioners' duties was presented by the Kansas Association of Counties and I found it very interesting and informative. And that's why I'm concerned here today because the outline of what we are charged to do as a board has not been done here in this county, simply based on the fact that, like you explained, you've been here a long time and you know how things work and according to...
No, what I said was that I was familiar with the entities that come in or asking money.
And you also said that you were familiar and, and fine with the idea of appointing a part-time position and then letting it become permanent. So that is a familiarity concept which I'm trying to address. If we let familiarity be the foundation of all the things and the decisions that we make and do, then we're not defining our purpose and I think our purpose needs to be defined, not only for ourselves to operate functionally, but also so that the public can be aware of what we hold ourselves account, how we hold ourselves accountable and what you, what demands you may make as the public on us as a board. So primarily, the first thing that a Board of County Commissioners is to do is to create resolutions, to create policy and procedures. That's on the top of the list when the Kansas Association of Counties conducts their informative seminars. And I'm concerned that what I see is a lack of willingness, you know, I think the comment you just made, Aljo, a few minutes ago is, "We can have a stack of resolutions." And I'm not proposing that we get arms deep, arms, arms-length deep into this. However, my putting a few simple resolutions forward is a way for us to create some sustainability. Instead of making decisions on a whim based on personal view of each individual situation, we can have a protocol. Now, the procedural way to go about this is you adopt the resolution and you keep it. And the next year, if you find a situation that challenges your resolution, you make an amendment. You basically work off of the, the foundation that you create. And so I'm suggesting that we do adopt these simple resolutions because we have none in place. We basically have no policies. And when you have a board that doesn't have any policies, they can make opinions and decisions at any given time without frame of reference, without paradigm, if, if you will. So given that and the situation I've explained with your comfortability in making decisions because of the length of time that you've sat in these seats, I have, I have something for us to consider. And I think it would look great to the public if the three of us would self-impose something like this because it holds us accountable and then it holds the future commissioners accountable. And if and when those future commissioners decide to repeal or revise or amend this potential resolution, the public will be aware then of how they are or not holding themselves accountable. So given all of that as a frame of reference, I'd like to read to you what I propose. Whereas Kansas State Statute 19212 reads, "Powers of Board of Commissioners, Six, to represent the county and have the care of the county property and the management of the business and concerns of the county in all cases where no other provision is made by law. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, that a term limit on this elected position shall be beneficial to the balance of local government. It is further resolved and proclaimed that any member elected to the Board of County Commissioners may serve two consecutive terms and must then let pass one whole term before sitting on the board again. Now therefore be it further resolved that any participating member of the Board of County Commissioners shall attend at least one session or a minimum of eight hours of educational training pertaining to his or her position in order to maintain a satisfactory level of knowledge pertaining to the duties of such office." And in addition to that, there could be a clause that imposes a penalty if, if you didn't adhere to the minimum eight hours of educational training or one particular session. I think it would speak volumes for our board to self-impose some restrictions and show the public that we are being accountable. So I move that the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution with a term limit imposition and a minimum requirement of continuing education.
Do I have a second? Motion dies, lack of second. We'll move on. Where are we at?
My question is, why do you not think that that's important?
I think we have a term limit. We're called electors, they have them every four years. If you're not doing a satisfactory job, they're gonna put somebody else in. Seems pretty simple to me.
People elect us, people elect us, we don't appoint ourselves to this job.
Well, the imposition of a term limit has been discussed on all levels of government and a vast majority of people agree that it would be something that should be thoroughly discussed if not adopted. And I think if Lincoln County were to be that one small entity that actually takes the gravity of the situation and applies it to the reality, it could be a huge movement, a momentum, not just for our local area, but it could actually influence above and beyond what we can imagine as far as the way that our nation is operating. And I, I seriously think that it should be something that's considered and obviously I don't have a great agreement, any agreement here on the board, but why do you not think it should be required that we have a minimum amount of educational training?
I thought we done been through this. How many times we gonna go over today?
Educational training?
No, that regula...
Yeah, my question is, why do you not think that, you didn't vote for the resolution? So my follow-up question is, why are you against having educational training for our community?
You can get all the education you want, I don't care.
But you don't want to have educational training?
I seek out the training, the educational training that I need, that I feel like I need.
And you don't think that future board members who sit in your seat should be required to have...
Everyone's training level's different. Some people are trained in certain things, some people are trained in other things.
So does it alarm you that when I went to the Kansas Association of Counties, well, let me, let me back up. Mr. Chairman, could you address the question as to why you don't see that it's necessary for the commissioners to obtain educational training?
I guess I can only speak for myself. I have attended some continuing Ed classes for the commission that I felt that I needed and my time allowed. As to impose it upon somebody else, I would not do it. No, I will not do that to an elected official. Let's move on, please.
Well, this is my concern. As you said, you can only speak for yourself, but as this board, we are to speak for others and we are to impose certain restrictions on things for the betterment of the situation, for the betterment of the future. And I don't see how as a newcomer, you wouldn't assume that I should attend a, a minimum amount of educational requirement.
I told you, you get all of yours, but I ain't heard. It's up to you. If you feel like you need it, go do it.
So are you aware then, either of you or both of you, that the Kansas Association of Counties lists policymaking as one of the top priorities of our board's responsibilities?
Yes.
Are you aware, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm aware. Let's move on, please.
If you are aware that our primary responsibility is to create policy, then why has there been very little policy created under your regime?
There's no sufficient...
I resent that comment completely. I am not a king. I am the chairman. I am an elected official on my district. I am representing them. Let's move on, please. I am the chairman. We have spent enough time on that one. What's your next point?
Okay, my, my suggestion is that we review the job descriptions. It was described last week that the last two people who have obtained somehow or another the position of EMS Director were not given job descriptions. And while that may be for a variety of reasons, I still think it should be considered annually by the county commissioners that we review job descriptions.
I like that they were given job descriptions.
That is not what I said.
I'm sorry?
Every, every woman that applied for the weekly applications received the job description that we had at that time, but since that time, we have not updated it and it probably needs to be updated. But I never did not give a job description to an applicant.
You told me that the job, the job description that I read for EMS Director was dated and that those are no longer the requirements for the person who is currently there or and, or has served...
I said the job description was dated and probably needed to be updated because it has not been updated since we told applications for a full-time director and I believe it probably needs to be updated.
Okay, given that, as a premise...
But I never said that I did not...
Given what you said as a premise, I move that the county commissioners create a resolution to annually revise and/or at least, I move that the county commissioners annually revisit job descriptions, making any... I move that the county commissioners annually revisit job descriptions, making any necessary revisions. I think to simply... Oh, excuse me. Let me let my motion stand.
Do I have a second? Motion dies, lack of second.
I think to just allow, you know, job descriptions to be without any kind of revision or supervision.
We review them as need basis. Deborah says there's something in there that needs to be changed. She reviews them. She comes to us and then we change it.
So then why do we currently have a situation where we are in agreement with HR that we don't have a proper update?
It's called time and I have to have time to do that.
And I'm asking that the board take time and make time to do that and we not just put 100% of that responsibility onto your department. That is my request.
Don, I believe you had something for us.
I just have the legends that have been submitted.
Have we submitted them to the auditor?
And I was going to submit mine, but I'll just attach it to the rest, yes, that we...
They have been submitted to the auditor for next week? Okay.
They're next. And afternoon meeting is a work session, right?
I just told the auditors you're just gonna have, that it's been permitted comments.
Okay, what is...
So I'd like some clarification on that.
What is that timeframe, please? What is that timeframe for them to meet?
He said the afternoon, so I was assuming...
Okay, all right. Yeah, we're finished. All right.
I can double-check that.
Okay, that's fine.
You're going to send us the time of the afternoon work session?
The afternoon meeting that the auditor will be here.
And that's for the 17th? And...
It will be part of your agenda.
We had talked about that last week. Is it called a work session?
He told us to have a work session to prohibit outside services from disrupting to be fashioned.
Okay, is that what you've done in the past?
Yes, it's usually been us and the auditor and Don.
So is it a closed meeting?
I don't think it can be closed, but...
Has it been closed in the past?
No.
Wait, I'm confused. It was always part of an open meeting or you have done work sessions separately in the past?
No, it's always been part of the open meeting.
But I asked them and they said, I said, "Is this what you've done in the past, a work session?" And they said, "Yes." So I'm confused.
Well, that is it. I guess.
I'm interested in an answer from the board.
We don't necessarily, I mean, you can call it what you want. We sit down with the auditors and we go through things and then we make changes and we go back through them again and re-totally and I guess, you know...
But I'm saying, have you done similarly like this in a separate session? Like you do your morning meeting and then you come back and do...
In the afternoon and do the audits.
And have those been part of a, I mean, do you send out an agenda for that or how? No?
It just says budget.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's supposed to be on the agenda if we're gonna be...
So last week it was stated that we can have a closed session for that?
No, what I stated was that the auditor had asked and that he considered a work session to make the best productive amount of time. Was what I understood him to say in my office. But I am not going to get into whether or not I have time to research. I would just assume it like we've always, or it's part of the weekly agenda.
But this is the same auditor we've used for multiple years?
We've used the same auditing firm. I think Jeff has been with us two years.
So he was requesting that we do it differently than we did last year.
Got anything else for us, Tom? Mike, did you have something?
I move that we adopt parliamentary procedure.
Do I have a second? Motion dies, lack of second. This is pending adjournment until 8 o'clock on Monday morning.
I was going to move that we hold an evening meeting at the end of the month so that the public can attend. But I was cut off.